... person but for everybody. And I want to remind you that the second half of the forum will be the audience question portion. So until then, it'll be planned questions from us. So, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's candidate forum. My name is Mitch Rave. I am the Vice President of Public Policy at the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. We are pleased to bring you tonight the Sioux Falls City Council Candidate Forum featuring candidates vying for the at-large Northeast, Northwest, and Southeast District seats. We want to say thank you to the city of Sioux Falls, City Clerk Jeremy Washington, and the Sioux Falls City Council for allowing us to host this community event here in Carnegie Town Hall. We'll kick off the forum with the candidates shortly, but first I want to introduce our moderator for this evening's event, Ryan Budmire, who is the VP of PR and Business Development at Lawrence &amp; Schiller. Prior to his work at LNS, Ryan worked in the Governor's Office of Economic Development and for Governor Dennis Dugard in his office. With that, I'll turn the mic over to Ryan to provide the rules of the forum and start the Q&amp;A. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Mitch. Welcome to 2024 City Council Forum hosted by the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. Hello. [laughter]
Got it. Got it. Oh, I started that so great, too. Try this again. Thanks, Mitch. Again, welcome to the 2024 City Council Forum hosted by the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. As Mitch mentioned, I'm Ryan Budmire, and I'll be the moderator this evening. We're happy to have our city council candidates present with us today. This forum is divided into two sections. As Mitch kind of mentioned, the first one will include questions that are crafted by the forum organizers, and the second will include questions submitted by you, the audience. Each section will last around one hour. If you have a question, please write them down on the cards provided and hold them up for one of the volunteers to come and grab. Please write your questions legibly. Remember to phrase the question so that all candidates can answer. We will not read questions addressed to individual candidates. They have to be for everybody. Please understand that I might combine questions on a similar topic. If your question's not asked today, please feel free to stay after the event to speak with candidates individually or contact them by phone or email. We'd ask at this time that you please silence your cellphones. Also, we ask that you take personal conversations to the adjacent room so as not to interrupt the folks that are listening. Today's format for each section is as follows. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to introduce themselves, indicate what district they're running for, and answer why they decided to run. They may also take this opportunity to address anything that is of special interest to them. Then we'll move on to the questions. Candidates will have 60 seconds to respond to questions, and if there, and there is no rebuttal time. I will rotate which candidate is first to respond to a question, and I'll also take the liberty to ask a follow-up question when necessary. Follow-ups will be limited to 30 seconds. At the end of the forum today, each candidate will have an additional 90 seconds for their closing statement and to bring this forum to an end. Candidates, the timer is located in front of us, and there are signs to let you know when there's 30 seconds left and when your time is up. Thank you for following the limits, and if you should go over the time, I will let you know without the air horn. We'll start introductions on my left. Richard, we'll start with you. Go, feel free.
Hello, everyone. Richard Thomason. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, as well as the candidates and everyone out here. It's great to see everybody here. So, I'm running at the at-large district. I moved to Sioux Falls when I was two and a half, graduated Lincoln High School. I spent four years out of state at a college in Minnesota, came back here and started my career. I currently work at a bank and was in commercial real estate before then. I am looking forward to hopefully serving on the city council because I want to give back to this community that's given so much to me throughout my 26 years of living here. This has been a fantastic community, but we also need to remember that we need to grow as well in some other areas. So, Richard Thomason, at-large.
Very good. Allison?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Allison Renville. I am a single mother. I live here in Sioux Falls with two of my kids. I have a 16-year-old boy and a four-year-old boy. I am originally from assistant in South Dakota. I've been organizing in and around the political arena here in South Dakota for over 20 years. I've spent my time organizing campaigns, a lot around G O TV, but also around diplomatic, like tribal relations and within the legislation as well. I really decided to run because as my opponents started coming forward, I just wasn't satisfied with the things that I was hearing. Not only am I, again, and I will point this out every single time, we're at the table together, I'm, again, one of the only persons of color in the room. And I frankly, I'm just kind of, it's, I struggle with that reality every time I have to come to it. So, I'm running for the opportunity to have better representation on city council, but also to draw us back to what it really means to be part of South Dakota. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Jordan?
Hi, I'm Jordan Devonbaugh. I'm running for city council at-large. I'm born and raised. My dad was a home builder. My mom helped start Orion Food Systems. I left town to study theater, and I ran a children's theater for a number of years in the Haymarket Theater in Lincoln, Nebraska. Traveled the world, came back, focused on really affordable housing with my family. And as I began to pull back the layers of municipal systems, I began to realize that all these challenges that we have, like affordable housing, transit, crime, all of these things are connected to so many of the systems that we've built. I call it the game board, our ordinances, our zoning. I believe as a city counselor, I have the know-how, I have the perspective, I have the active engagement in our community as I engage with houseless folks, I engage with developers, I have conversations across this community through my work with the BAM Institute, the Sioux Falls Tool Library, and the Community Revitalization Collective. So, what I hope to bring is a fresh perspective, but someone with the can-do attitude to get their hands dirty.
Perfect. Thanks, Jordan. We will, we'll go ahead and pass over David for now. Miranda, go ahead.
Hello. My name's Miranda Basie. I will point out, I'll blame my husband for this, but on any materials, you'll want to update the spelling of my name to B A S Y E, and nobody ever spelled Kane wrong. So, I blame my husband for that. So, I was born and raised here in Sioux Falls. My dad's Barney from Barney's Auto. So, a few of you have maybe heard this, but if I was a boy, I probably would have been Barney the Fifth, which is a lot like Barney Fife from the Andy Griffith Show. So, I'm pretty glad that didn't happen. But I grew up turning ranches, mowing commercial buffer zones because that's just what you did when you were part of a small family business. I graduated high school from Brandon Valley, went to school at the University of Sioux Falls, and I always just thought I wanted to leave. And Sioux Falls did a really good job of keeping my husband and I here to continue our careers and buy a home. So, I'm running for the Northeast District seat, and really that's where I grew up. Those are the streets that I waited for the school bus under a billboard on, that I helped weed whack and mow along the curbs. So, I would love the opportunity to pay it forward and give back to this community. I believe at its core, public service is being a conduit or being a vessel for the voice of the community members, and I would love the opportunity to serve my neighbors in the Northeast.
Perfect. As a last-day Budmire, I feel your pain. So, Neil, go ahead.
Hello. My name's Neil Jesky. I'm from Milwaukee, Wisconsin. This wouldn't be my first time serving the public. I worked for the Department of Public Works in Wauwatosa, Wisconsin. I was a garbage man for three years and also worked at the city dump. They helped me get my commercial driver's license because I took initiative to study. I'm engaged to be married from a woman from South America, and pop quiz, she doesn't speak Spanish. Besides that, I'm running to, for the Northeast City Council District. I'm running because I saw YouTube video about the, on the news about people living in squalor in our community, and some, something needs to be investigated there. This is, they deserve better, and we will do better. We're already actively in the community trying to help. Just the other day, Monday, Tuesday, we already, we're able to close a, I would call it a drug house. So, that's good news, but I'm running to humbly ask for your votes. Vote for Neil for Northeast District. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Jennifer, go ahead and close it out.
Yes, hi. My name is Jennifer Siggety. I also get to blame my husband for a name that's a little difficult, but it's Jennifer Siggety. I was born and raised in Aberdeen, South Dakota, had a great upbringing there, but actually just couldn't wait to leave that town and get to something bigger. So, I moved to Minnesota, went to college, got my bachelor's degree in public administration, but really wanted to come back to South Dakota where I felt was home. But I chose Sioux Falls because it just had more economic development opportunities for my husband and I, and have now lived here for 25 years. I have absolutely loved this community. We've raised our three daughters here. One is now a senior in college, and two are seniors at Jefferson High School. Go Cavs during stay days. Anyway, I, we just love this community, and as they've kind of developed into adults and thinking about going our way to college, I'm real excited that they're talking about wanting to stay here, and that's just not the experience I had when I was 18. And so, I think Sioux Falls is just the kind of town that we draw people in, we hopefully get people, kids, our kids to stay. My parents have now retired here, so I love the perspective that they can bring of what it's like as a retiree living here. And I just, I'm running unopposed in the Northwest District. Otherwise, I would be asking for your vote, but just wanted to be here tonight to introduce myself. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Jennifer. Let's go ahead and get started with our first question. We'll just keep kind of coming down the line and start with somebody new every time. But question number one, if elected, what are some of your key initiatives and what leadership qualities do you obtain that will help you solve those initiatives? And Allison, we'll start with you.
So, let me pull up some of my notes. Over the last couple of years that I've been here organizing, I've really gotten to know a lot of different people throughout a lot of different demographics in the city. And one thing that I think everyone thinks is really important is to deal with what's going on with the houseless community here. The transient community is what I like to call it because of the fact that there are so many people going through the criminal justice system. And I just really think it's important to focus on people's mental health and how we can assist people through other initiatives that we have yet to even come up with.
Awesome. Thank you. Jordan?
City council is in the business of condition creation. They establish good soil for a community, just in the same way that you do with gardening. Now, I believe that good soil comes from active engagement with communities. And what I would like, what I want to emphasize is our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods are the people that we should be engaging with.
I think we're having some trouble with the mic. I don't know.
Hello. Is that working? All right. Neighborhoods. Get it. Neighborhoods. We need to invest in our neighborhoods. Emphasize community identity. Emphasize connectivity, because that's where everything follows from. That's where safer streets follow from. That's where great businesses follow from. It's when people are engaged and connected. So, a key initiative for my, for me is establishing more neighborhood associations, creating more resources for neighborhoods to engage with the challenges that they have. And then from there, our city can engage with those active members of our, our community to identify where our investments should be going to get the highest return on investment.
Thanks, Jordan. Welcome, David. If, maybe, let's just take 60 seconds and go ahead and introduce yourself, maybe explain why you're running for council, and then we'll go into the first question.
All right. So, I'm David Sokitis, and I believe in practical, caring, honest government. That, that's really it in a nutshell. You've got to care about people and go the extra mile to help them out. And that's actually why I'm late tonight, because I needed to give somebody a little extra attention to help them on their way this evening. So, yeah, if you, if you can care about people, if you've got honesty and integrity in your heart, then you can do a lot in government. And I've got plans to address quite a number of widespread issues, but I'm out of time, so. You go on.
Well, let's, that, great introduction. Do you have anything that you would like to add to? If elected, what are some of your key initiatives and what leadership qualities do you obtain that will help you solve those initiatives?
Key initiatives? Lot of those. Affordable housing is a big issue. It comes up later in, in tonight's forum, so I won't dwell too much on it. Sane drug policy. Drug prohibition has been a horrible disaster for this country, and I have plans to make it much less of a problem. Homelessness, that, that's related to drug prohibition and poverty and a lot of other issues. I, I put together a PowerPoint on how we could largely eliminate homelessness in Sioux Falls mostly by caring about people and addressing the root causes like mental illness and emotional trauma. Addiction. So, if we can work at those kind of problems, then we can address the homeless crisis that's invading our city and leading to people asking for money on every street corner. We can reduce crime and addiction. Again, that's related to drug policy. Our nation's drug policy creates crime when it should not. End of mouth.
Thank you. Miranda?
Yes, so, key initiatives and leadership qualities, you know, one of the things that I've been hearing a lot from, from some of my neighbors in the Northeast, especially when you think about the juxtaposition of kind of the traditional Northeast and the kind of homes and things that are there, as opposed to maybe some of the new growth, is being heard. And so, I think a big part wrapped up in key initiatives and those leadership skills is listening and listening with curiosity and asking questions. You know, I think a lot of that's going to be centered around safety, continuing to make sure that our community members feel safe, both physically, but then also psychologically, we're our best people when we feel safe and secure. And then wrapped up in that, of course, is things like infrastructure and then strategic intentional economic growth.
Perfect. Neil, go ahead.
I'd just like to hit my four points real quick, and I'll go back and review them. Number one, repeal rental permits. The government's coming for your spare bedroom here in Sioux Falls, whether you own your house or you, or lease it. They want you to beg for permission to, so I urge everyone to not comply. Second is enforce city code. We, I've been talking to people, they've had broken windows for two years, unimaginable conditions you would never let anyone in your family ever live in, and there's a problem there. Third is cut the mayor's appointees, so a lower cost of government. We have four positions making over almost $575,000. So, if we could cut there and distribute the, those wages to give tax relief and put to more frontline workers, what, or city workers would provide services, and then help fix the crime, which it kind of leads back to the, some of our houses in our community where there's busted-out windows, would allow opportunity for criminals and criminal activity, which you don't want in your neighborhoods to take place. So, I think that kind of links together.
Perfect. Thanks, Neil. Jennifer?
I, I don't actually have 100% specific issues that I want to address because I think it's really important that the city council goes into it with a very open mind, that they're going to have to deal with all kinds of issues. I'm going to guess that nobody currently sitting on the council ever thought they'd have to know a bunch of things about taxidermy, and now look where, what they're all learning. That being said, things that are important to me, workplace development, or workforce development, excuse me, just like I talked about earlier, keeping our young kids here, giving them opportunities. And then also, just making sure that we make smart decisions about our infrastructure. We know we're growing, we're not, we're going to continue to. So, I want to make sure our traffic keeps moving, our water's taken care of, and that we just keep building on to the great city that we've got.
Awesome. Richard, go ahead and close it.
Some of the initiatives would be, one would be good fiscal conservativeness, making sure we're making great decisions with our money. Second would be supporting our quality of life in Sioux Falls, parks, public safety, roads. Third would be creating affordable housing. We need affordable housing. Everyone's going to talk about that up here. It is something that we need to talk about and promote and get into our system here. Also, one thing that I believe makes me an effective leader is I've been in public office before. I was in the legislature for two years. I've learned to work with constituents and across the aisle, and I really pride myself in building relationships and ensuring that we make the best decisions for all of the stakeholders.
Awesome. We'll go ahead and start with Jordan for our next question. Next question for everybody is, how would you collaborate with the mayor, city administration, and other key community organizations? Jordan, start with you.
First of all, over food, first and foremost, especially if it's a really difficult conversation. So, we need to build connection with each other. If we're going to work in community with each other, we have to be a community. We have to engage each other. And especially if the challenge involves, is it a particular spot, let's say? Let's say we're talking about 8th Street. Let's say we're talking about the Bishop Dudley Block. It'd be nice to have a conversation with everybody involved down there, including the people that live down there. So, I think my big emphasis is, let's bring everybody together. And I'm, I'm doing this already. I have a forum on March 23rd for a health forum at Wesley United, and I've been doing forums for years. So, the more we can get people together, over food preferably, that's how we're going to be building connections and really get through some of these hefty challenges that are coming our way.
Awesome. David? Same question.
All right. Collaboration and connection. Well, well, I'm willing to talk to anybody about anything, so that's why I publish my, my email address, my phone number. You've got to be able to talk to people before you can collaborate with them. I, I've worked with city staff on a wide variety of different topics, and, and I find that city staff is itself, oh, really happy to talk with people. I think city staff is exemplary in their responsiveness. Directors and the mayor, not so much. They tend to be more political, and, and I've, I've reached out to the mayor repeatedly by standing over there during public input, and he's over here, and I ask him some questions, and I never get a response. So, that, that kind of makes bidirectional collaboration difficult. Oh, and for key community organizations, I'm happy to talk to them, and I've done that before. I've visited the St. Francis House and the...
Perfect. Miranda?
You know, throughout this endeavor, to be here talking to you today, that's a big part of the efforts that I've made thus far, is having relationships and conversations. And I've been pleased with the response with so many of our community leaders and their willingness to have conversations and entertain curious questions. And so, I think that that's an important piece of collaboration, is back and forth dialogue and sharing of ideas, but then also to seeking to understand where maybe somebody's perspective comes from. So, not to say that we all need to agree on all things, and I certainly hope that we don't, but being willing and wanting to have multiple iterations of conversation and continuing to expand the forum of which those conversations are had.
Perfect. And just a, just so we're all on the same page, if, if we hold up the red stop sign, there is like a 10-second grace period, so feel free to finish your comment. And I, I'm from Belfus, but I'm pretty soft, so. Neil, go ahead.
Yes, I'd be overly available and willing and able to work with anyone for the better of our community and our citizens. I don't have a long-winded answer here, but I'm open and available, and I will treat everyone with love and respect.
Perfect. Jennifer?
Boy, I'll just echo all of that. You know, relationship building is the most important thing when, to get things done. So, I would, I would, I'm certainly a very collaborative worker in my professional life and would reach out to, I already have actually been meeting with all the departments in the city and just getting to know people and kind of getting a little head start. And I will, I will absolutely continue to do that for the better of Sioux Falls.
Awesome. Thanks, Jennifer. Richard?
Communication, and as we've all said, building relationships, and those are two big things about working with different people within government, different people within society, and even people that you're on the council with. And so, that, those are the two biggest things that we need to have as a city council, is making sure that when we're working with the mayor, different community organizations, we have a relationship with them first, and then we are able to communicate, and that makes everything go very well.
Perfect. And we'll have Allison close it out.
So, I look forward to being able to offer the network that I come to the table with. Over 20 years during my advocacy, I have built multiple network connections throughout the country, even globally as part of different initiatives with the Obama Foundation and so on. And so, when I come to the table, I like to make sure that people are aware that, you know, scratch my back, I'll scratch yours. I have absolutely no qualms about being the middleman in, when it comes to creating change and doing what I can to facilitate progress. Another thing is that, you know, I want people to know that I have no fear. I really don't care if I get rejected on something, so I'll send that email, and I'll make those calls, and I'll show up wherever I have to be in order for my constituents, you know, their considerations to be at the table.
Awesome. Just a quick reminder, if you do have questions, please write them on the pieces of paper that are provided. Lift them up. One of the volunteers will come grab them. We will address those in the second part of this forum. So, David, we're going to go to you for the third question. The third question is, Sioux Falls has one of the lowest unemployment rates in the country, which brings forth its own challenges to many of our local businesses and killing, and filling key roles for their workforce. What role do you think the city and local government play in workforce development and retention?
Workforce retention. You've got to have a good, you've got to have a nice friendly city to encourage people to come here and people to stay here. But part of that is having affordable housing, which we'll address later. Another part is having childcare that's not so horribly expensive. We'll address that later in this forum. And, you know, it's nice to have a pretty city, which we pretty much have, but there's always room for improvement. We could add more trees, for example, and more urban artwork, more parks. We've got to make sure that the parks that the city are, that, that the parks the city is building have enough amenities to drive people to them. I think those are the main issues with regard to workforce development and retaining. The city can do quite a bit. We're not going to solve every problem, but we can sure make a lot of progress on those which I have named.
Perfect. Thanks, David. Miranda, go to you.
So, when I think workforce development and retention, you know, my mind first goes to the Sioux Falls Development Foundation and some of the initiatives there that they're doing with, with the support of the city and our crew. And so, I think, you know, paying attention to that and continuing to have conversations to hone those, tapping into our, you know, education facilities that we're really fortunate to have here in Sioux Falls as well. But, you know, as David mentioned, there's a lot of things that go into that that are part of workforce. So, you know, anybody, anybody who's going to come here to be part of our workforce, they need homes, you know, they need good streets to drive on, and they need their snow plowed, especially if they're going to move up north from the south. So, I think that all of those things play a part in continuing to develop our workforce and supporting the businesses that choose to do business here in Sioux Falls.
Perfect. Just to repeat the question for anybody watching, Neil, what role do you think the city and local government play in workforce development and retention?
Little to none. Well, I guess that, well, a thing we could use is the temporary positions we have. I'm an example of this. I was a temporary worker before. It gave me a good career opportunity, and it's good for these younger kids or anyone of working age to go, now, we could even make a program where someone needs some help, we could make a pilot program where the city, we all work together and say this person, you have to stay off drugs, and you have to show up to work every day and be responsible, and work six months, and then we could have some other companies take them in. There's a lot of opportunities we have. But as far as the government, little to none, and they just need to make a level playing field and equal opportunity and just get out the way and get off our back. Thank you.
Perfect. Jennifer?
I'd just like to piggyback on what Miranda said. The Sioux Falls Development Corp, Foundation has a fantastic program that they're building right now. I think we need to continue to support that as a city. I think our, in Sioux Falls, our workforce development, we need to, we need to start young. We need to work with our, even down to middle school and high school kids, and really help them develop plans and goals that make sense for them, whatever that looks like. If you look at child data and child advocacy data, one of the biggest growing data points in our country right now is kids between the ages of 18 and 25, or young adults, that are not in school and that are not working. That's a statistic we just never had back in the 70s, 80s, 90s. And so, I think our youth need guidance from us, that, you know, whether that, that's job shadow programs or whatever that looks like. I think we need to focus on, on our young kids.
Perfect. Richard?
Providing a friendly environment, not only for the businesses, but the people that work in those businesses. And whether that is, as we've talked about, quality of life, ensuring that our parks are good to go, our public safety is good to go, our roads are, our roads are good to go, but also helping show that we're advancing as a community, coming up with different ideas of how we develop things, where we develop things, what, what businesses we're bringing in that help collaborate with other ones as well. And so, we just have to make sure that we are constantly striving to keep doing better and not get stuck or get falling behind either.
Perfect. Allison, what role do you think the city and local government play in workforce development development retention?
I really think it could be up to city council to create initiatives and incentives to support workers, support families, but also, uh, support those small business owners who are experiencing the, um, the rotating door of workers. It's like, yeah, we have a low unemployment rate here, but it's because things are so expensive and rapidly, rapidly growing so quickly that people have to have that many jobs. But yet there are so many job opportunities, yet you could get a job if you lost yours today. Um, so, are you scared of me? But, you know, it's important for us to be able to support, um, you know, like any kind of employee being able to excel in their job. So if we're creating, um, management programs and other opportunities for them to thrive in those positions, I think that would be a really good idea.
Jordan?
I was talking about condition creation later, uh, earlier, and, um, here's the thing, we need to help people get to where they need to be. So sometimes that's literally. Public transit is a workforce issue. If you can't get to work, to work, it isn't going to work. Okay? It's $8,500 a year to own a car. So that's a big one, and we need functional public transit. That's a workforce issue. Skill development. How do we teach people the basic skills? How to read a tape measure? How to small dice an onion? We're not talking a two-year degree. We're talking about a few workshops and putting it in places like the Union Gospel Mission with our work with the Preservation Gishen and the Community Workshop. Uh, and, and lastly, people. We need good people for people to work with. We need mentors. We need to connect people with the great teachers in our community. We need proper apprenticeship in our community. Because if you don't care about your work, you're not going to work hard.
Great. We'll go on to question four. Miranda will start with you. This is a little bit longer one, so we'll see if I can read it all without messing up. As word spreads across the nation about the fantastic business, business climate in Sioux Falls, many people and businesses are making their move here. While welcomed, this growth has caused a few growing pains, including the decrease in affordable workforce housing. Tell us what specific initiative or initiatives you will implement to make owning or renting a home more attainable for hardworking citizens of Sioux Falls. In addition, what do you understand to be the role of government in creating affordable housing?
Many of us had the opportunity to chat with, um, the HBA and Raze and things like that last week about this. And I think a huge part of affordable housing, workforce housing, and managing this growth is collaborating with the folks that are doing it every day. And so that might be in conversations as it relates to regulations, as it relates to zoning, as it relates to even, you know, our building requirements and building codes. And so I think it's having a collaborative conversation there. And I think it's also really strategic land use and being creative of maybe what those multi-housing units could look like. And maybe it's doing something that is different than we've done before. And so I think that a big part of the city government and the city council is being a facilitator of those conversations and bringing those folks to the table.
Perfect. Neil?
Uh, so we're talking about housing. So we can't build a foundation or, um, housing on bad foundations. So we have to fix the code and problems we have where we have now. But as far as housing after that, I've experienced investing in multifamily real estate. We need to see in our community what, what houses are, need, need attention. And maybe we all need to go in there and fix them up and provide better housing. But I think we also need to focus on duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, so people can actually own them instead of being permanent renters. This is not investment advice, but there's this thing called house hacking or FHA owner occupied. You can put down three and a half percent instead of 20%. It's a lower entry to, so people can actually own a home. So I think I'll say that. But as far as the government getting involved, I don't think there should be little to none.
Jennifer?
Uh, I'm going to be fully transparent. This housing is not my strength and I'm always so intimidated because of so many of the candidates up here, this is their strength. So I'm just learning. I, you know, met with home builders, met with Raze. I've been, um, asking a lot of questions as best I can. And, and I'm just going to continue to learn about all the challenges and maybe some solutions. I've, I've heard that, uh, Councilor Branco and Councilor Sale are possibly putting to, or are putting together, um, some initiatives for maybe our, for a tax incentive for people who build green homes. I think I'd be supportive of that. I'd also maybe explore the idea of us giving the builders a little bit of break on fees that they pay to develop land if they're going to build smaller houses, maybe smaller, more affordable, instead of these giant houses that our young people can't move into. So, um, I'm just learning and anybody who wants to hit me up about housing, I'm happy to listen.
Love it. Thanks, Jennifer. Richard, once again, the question, tell us what specific initiative or initiatives you will implement to make owning or renting home more attainable for hardworking citizens in Sioux Falls? In addition, what do you, you understand the role of government in creating affordable housing?
One thing I really want to look into and emphasize this is the location of the affordable housing. We do have some good affordable housing in Sioux Falls. Unfortunately, sometimes it's maybe not in the areas that are convenient for everyone. And so where can we redevelop inside of Sioux Falls to where it's a centrally located affordable housing unit so that all of the amenities can be used by the people living in there? And one role that the government could play in that is working with local developers and finding different areas of town that we could ensure that good affordable housing is being built in a good, convenient location for all.
Perfect. Allison?
So all good ideas from all over the board. Uh, I would like to say specifically that I am coming into this as a tribal member. I have seen many housing initiatives happen on the reservation that we're relying on grant opportunities and any other kinds of things that we're supposed to be able to rely on the government for. And, you know, recently there is over $4 million that have come into, looking into affordable workforce housing. And so even being able to be part of those conversations and re-establishing what a nuclear family in South Dakota looks like, um, I think is really important for the conversation as well. Um, a lot of the times they are foster parents who are taking in their grandchildren or their grandparents and so on and so forth, or, um, you know, the, the idea of family here in Sioux Falls is a lot different than what I think is included in the conversation.
Jordan?
Get your Google out and type missing middle housing. It's a great little picture that showcases all the types of housing that we're not building right now, particularly in Sioux Falls. And that's because of zoning. That's because of ordinances. That's because of copy paste structures that came from the 1950s. So to go after and to solve affordable housing, which we won't, we have to mitigate the challenges. We have to go after the things through tons of different strategies. And that could be, uh, density along bus routes, city-backed low-interest loans, variance packages like this incremental development package that I will have sheets out, out in the, out in the main lobby in a little bit. Housing trusts, social housing initiatives, co-housing, CDCs, housings on top of, uh, public buildings. There's all sorts of stuff that we could be doing that we're not doing. And what we got to do is start to look at other cities and bring that stuff here.
Perfect. David closes out.
All right. Affordable housing. We need to remember that cities are designed to prevent the construction of affordable housing early. That, that's the way we do things these days. We prevent affordable housing. Uh, one of the pro, prom, one of the most prominent zoning models is residential suburban. It requires building, building big expensive houses on big lots with a lot of spaces for cars. We need to get away from that construction model and work toward integration of different levels of housing. We need to put houses closer together in some areas. We got to build smaller, cheaper houses is, is what it comes down to. If you just build big expensive houses, you're never going to get affordable housing. And that, the lack of affordable housing benefits certain people who already have housing. I mean, if you're a, a real estate broker, you want housing prices to be up through the roof so that you can keep making all kinds of money. So there is some, uh, class conflict here that we can remediate with a better zoning.
Perfect. We're going to go ahead and start with Neil on the fifth question. Um, the fifth question is with the recent closure of Apple Tree Children's Center, increased pressure has been placed on officials to address the growing need for children and childcare in Sioux Falls. The council's regulatory oversight committee has met several times to discuss the ongoing childcare crisis and brainstorm actions the city may take moving forward. If elected, how do you plan to work to address this issue?
Yeah, sure. So they're brainstorming issues and did, I would just wonder, did they go talk to the leaders in these, um, the daycare centers? I would do that. I would start there. And then second, I would look at other communities, would have successful, uh, I would have to look at other communities. I'll be honest, this isn't my expertise. But one thing I don't understand why the city wouldn't cut, freeze their property taxes, cut their taxes to keep them in business, because this sounds like a decent thing our community needs. Um, and I just have to tell you guys that it's not my expertise and I have a lot of ex, research to do. But as far as that, I'd say get the government off their back, cut their taxes. And as far as either something with the child, uh, ratio maybe could be changed. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Jennifer?
Um, we need to support our childcare workers. We need to uplift them and not consider them babysitters. Uh, I'm very supportive of the city's new, um, initiative to kind of, well, not new, but to continue to, um, work with Southeast Tech to develop, um, the, their programs relating, um, to people who want to go into childcare so that they can get a certificate or a degree or whatever that looks like. Um, I'm very supportive of that collaboration. I also, um, support the idea of, um, a full-time employee or whatever that end up, ends up looking like, if that's through Thrive or if it's a city, um, employee or somebody to kind of help coordinate childcare in our city. This is a, a problem. We're really hurting our young families by, by making, you know, they're having to pay so much intuition. It's, it's, um, it's a problem. It's a problem nationwide that I do actually kind of know quite a bit about. But I'm going to be a strong advocate for our childcare and our daycare centers.
Perfect. Thanks, Jennifer. Richard?
Childcare is one of the biggest issues today. And while I do not have kids, I have followed it as intensely as I can. I have a friend who spent, who had to spend $2,000 a month for two children in childcare. That takes away from other qualities of life that they can be doing. It takes away from other events they can be doing as a whole family. So it not only affects the children, but affects the families as well. And the number one thing we would need to do is collaborate, not just with the leaders in the childcare industry, but other leaders and citizens in our community to understand where it's going and how we can make it better. And so if we can learn from everybody, hopefully we could create a plan as a community to make the childcare crisis at least minimize so that we can get back to living good, normal lives for everyone.
Cool. Just to repeat the question real quick before you go ahead, Allison. So there's a growing need for childcare in Sioux Falls. If elected, how do you plan to address this issue?
I have a plan now. So as a mother, this is, this is something that really has directly affected me. Um, you know, it's usually about $60 a day to take one child to a drop-off center. Unfortunately, that's like not doable for a lot of people. But also, you know, it's a really sensitive subject and we do have to put in consideration that a lot of people are afraid to send their kids to in-home childcare centers or, um, anywhere for that matter, because of Sioux Falls history and, you know, what has happened to some kids here in the city. But what I would like to see is a focus on recruiting, uh, former childcare workers who could partake in the idea that, you know, Jennifer has brought up. And I appreciate that because I was going to mention, um, that initiative there because we can be creating, um, up to dozens of new small business owners if we can, uh, you know, enable their success by creating opportunities for them to, um, fix their houses if they have some kind of, you know, issue that's keeping them from being able to take kids in. But our small businesses in this realm could be taking in 15 to 20 kids and then certifying people along the way.
Awesome. Jordan?
It takes a village. And I think we need to get back to that sensibility. We must collaborate in our neighborhoods and create hubs of access points of resources. Uh, that could be, uh, a childcare center that works within home daycares and eases some of the burdens of resources. I, I appreciated the idea of looking at property taxes and looking at those as key resources in neighborhoods. But a big thing is, is that we need to optimize for kids, not just cars. We need to make sure our kids have access to places like playgrounds. We need to have access for key resources, community hubs in our neighborhoods. And how can we find shared resources in these neighborhoods? There's examples all over our community, uh, places like Wesley United, which we're currently moving towards developing a community center and a childcare space, creating those spaces that can be accessed by the entire neighborhood.
Perfect. Mitch, you sure you don't want to answer this one? David, go ahead.
All right. $34 million. I did a little bit of math and some research and tried to figure out how much money it would take to subsidize the cost of childcare and drop it by one-third. And, and I think if the city spent $34 million in the coming year, we could do that. Now, that, that's a big hunk of money and it's hard to just wave your hands around and find $34 million. But, um, I think if we changed the approach to drug policy, we could save a whole lot of money and probably even make a whole lot of money because recreational cannabis is supremely popular and generates a lot of tax revenue. And if we would stop putting people in prison for the wrong stupid crimes, then that would also save a lot of money. Now, in addition to a subsidy, it'd be really nice to encourage, um, multi-generational families. While it's not the nuclear American family, it has the advantage of being really good for childcare. So we, we can solve this problem.
Thank you. Miranda?
We've mentioned a lot of the different kind of programs and initiatives and, you know, a couple that I'm really energized by in addition to the work, um, startups in Sioux Falls, Southeast Tech, Thrive, there's the community learning centers that are continuing to be valuable. But then also there's conversations at the state level, right? And like looking at some of the things that maybe Rapid City's doing or Kentucky's model. And so I'm really energized by the collaboration of conversations as it relates to childcare. And I think that there's no silver bullet. There isn't something, you know, a magic wand that we're going to wave and solve this. And it relates to so many other things. So as we continue to have these conversations as a community, I'm also excited about the position that we're talking about at the city level to kind of help coordinate those things and be maybe an outreach person, um, to help us put a more intentional incremental step in place.
Perfect. We'll go ahead. We've got our sixth and final prepared question. Jennifer will start with you, um, with this one. In recent years, our communities experienced a rise in crime rates. What do you see as the cause of this increase and how do you propose working with local law enforcement and other organizations to address this issue?
So with all respect to whoever wrote that question, um, it, it kind of makes it sound like, you know, crime is really increasing. And I, and I'll say, if you look at the crime statistics, um, our violent crimes are actually down quite significantly. Now, there are some crimes that are up. One of the most significant ones that's up is, um, uh, car thefts. I'm sure you've probably heard that. But 80% of the cars that are being stolen, uh, were not locked in the first place and some of them had firearms in them. So I think the, um, Senator, Councilor Cole, um, it, this past year, uh, the council passed, um, a small $50,000, um, a plan, not small, but a $50,000 plan to, um, do an awareness campaign for lock your doors. And it was pretty effective. So I would be supportive of, of things like that to like educate the public about what, what crimes are happening and how we, how we put a stop to them. Um, I, I'm completely supportive of whatever the police department is going to want to do. They're the experts here, not me.
Thanks, Jennifer. Richard?
I agree. Awareness is, is a big key to this. And, you know, growing up in Sioux Falls, when, when we moved here when I was two and a half, there was 93,000 people in our town. And, uh, now we're at 214,000. And I've had a friend's car stolen because he left it not only unlocked, but running in a parking lot at 5:30 on a Friday night. He hasn't seen it. Hopefully he does. But I've also had a friend's brother who was murdered, uh, because a gun was stolen out of a unlocked car. And so it's bringing up the awareness of what is happening and how it's happening and why it's happening in order for our community to realize that we can lock our doors, not only to our cars, but to our houses, but also holding everybody else around us accountable and making sure that we're all doing that as well.
Thank you. Allison?
So the mayor recently came out with some numbers about the, um, increases, decreases, whatever. The problem itself is the new normalization of what violence is in Sioux Falls. And so what we know is that they take plea bargains to get down from like manslaughter charges, murder charges, homicide, all this stuff. And then they get down to aggravated assault. Well, the numbers themselves show that, yeah, sure, it's gone down since the pandemic. Well, everybody is not stuck at home anymore. So of course it's going to go down a little bit. But the unfortunate thing is that there are still like over 400 aggravated assaults happening every year, even, I think it was over, well, over 500 for domestic violences. There is, um, so many assaults that at least one woman, um, a day is, is attacked by her domestic partner in Sioux Falls over. And so the normalization, I think, is the problem, and, you know, thinking that this is like just kind of the way it's going to be. By pulling us back in the South Dakota values and starting to value our neighbors themselves and getting involved in each other's lives and creating that community where we can rely on each other is really something I look forward to.
Awesome. Love it. Jordan, I'm going to repeat the question just real quick. In recent years, our communities experienced a rise in crime rates. What do you see as the cause for this increase, and how do you propose working with local law enforcement and other organizations to address the issue?
Crime is complex. There is not one cause. There is not one solution. We are all involved in this effort. And I would say some of the biggest challenges that we have are growth and poverty. A lot of this is an economic issue. The rent's going up. You can't pay for car payments. You can't afford food. I mean, that generates the dysregulation in ourselves, in our bodies. And basically, put it short, more money, more problems. So police respond to crime, and they're needed to respond to crime. But we also need to be taking proactive approaches to crime. Street trees reduce crime. Eyes on the street, having a grandma on a porch watching the kids, that reduces crime. Traffic calming, bump outs, ballards, that reduces speeding. Crisis stabilization, where we have people that with trauma training engaging with the houseless. All those things matter, and we can work together to tackle these issues.
Thanks, Jordan. David?
I visited the penitentiary a few years ago, and they told me that alcohol and drugs were the biggest drivers of crime in South Dakota. Notice that order, alcohol and drugs. So I started looking into the nation's drug and alcohol policy, and along the way, I came across a study of drug harms in the United Kingdom that said that alcohol was the most harmful recreational drug. But we sell it everywhere. Really, according to that study, alcohol is the most dangerous drug. And you see, you know, alcohol-induced crime regularly, and it's one of the biggest drivers of crime. So I'd like to see a long-term gradual migration away from alcohol and toward a much safer, somewhat unpopular alternative, cannabis. There are zero overdose deaths from cannabis, zero. So, and that would make a tremendous difference. And we're done.
Thanks, David. Miranda?
This question's timely because the police chief gave an update just on Tuesday night at the informational meeting, and, you know, Jennifer mentioned it, but there's a lot of statistics that are down. And so I think that, you know, the conversations are changing and evolving, and one of the things that I really appreciate about those reports is then trying to dig deeper and get insights and learn more about why things are happening and comparing things maybe year over year. One of the things that Richard mentioned was making ourselves accountable, and I think a lot of it also comes down to being good neighbors. And so compared with looking into why things are happening and the context around it and education, it's also being accountable to ourselves and our neighbors. And so if we see something, we can be proactive and we can be preventative as well.
Thanks, Miranda. Neil, close us out.
Yeah, violent criminals belong in jail. Hopefully, they don't start giving them paychecks in this country because it's getting ridiculous. The violent criminal what shot at the police at the mall a couple of years ago was my neighbor after we got out and doing a year on a 15-year jail bid, and now he violated parole in August of last year, and now he's still back. So I don't understand what's going on here. But as far as a good way to help stop crime right away is refuse to be a victim. Exercise your Second Amendment rights. Besides that, it seems like the crime is coming from certain hotspots, and the hotspots have all the broken windows, and it's the same code thing, so they have these little gang hideouts, and let's put an end to that. So that's, and I'll ride along with the police as well to understand both sides, and good police are supposed to, are commended as well as good citizens. Thank you.
Great. That's all the time we have for questions for this section. Let's take a second and give our candidates a round of applause for a fantastic beginning. At this time, we were going to take a break, but we're going to, beings that Sioux Falls and the chamber are just so efficient and so hardworking, we're just going to plow through it. Appreciate everybody submitting questions. I would ask for more questions, but honestly, we probably got like 15 or 20 up here already, and so I don't think we'll get through all of them, but we'll get through as many as we possibly can. So we'll go ahead and start the second section of tonight's forum. This time, oh, did Richard not go?
No.
Oh, he was first last time. Then we're going to start over there. Okay. This section's format will be exactly like the last section. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to questions with no rebuttal time. I'll rotate which candidate's first to respond, and I'll take the liberty to follow up when necessary. Follow-ups are going to be limited to 30 seconds. Probably won't do a lot of follow-ups, just because it seems unfair. I don't really know when to ask a follow-up, but we do have that if possible. So we'll go ahead and begin with our first audience question. This time, go ahead and start with Jennifer.
I started last time. I can, but...
You did?
Yeah.
You were right. Okay, we'll start with Richard. Good. Thank you, I guess. Okay, first question for Richard and for everybody. Where are the barriers in our city government for small business, and what can be done to lower the barriers for small business leaders to thrive?
I think one of the barriers is we do give a lot, I believe, of good incentives, TIFs and other things like that to help bring in big businesses, which is good. We need all types of businesses in our community. But a thing that we could do for small business leaders and small businesses is create a good support system for them within the city and also bring different initiatives for them that they can apply to that maybe others cannot, so that we're able to give them a path to grow and go from there. So thank you.
Perfect. I'm going to read it again here. Where are the barriers in our city government for small businesses, and what can be done to lower the barriers for small business leaders to thrive?
I think it has a lot to do with city placement. You know, there's a lot of integration in our city. We are very well-integrated where there are no specific neighborhoods and/or parts of the city that are designated to certain demographics of the community. If we can start looking at, as council people, looking at opportunities on how to create those type of community through kind of getting people closer together, businesses and things like that. And not only are we creating the community, but we're giving them outlets to, you know, not just share opportunity but share their resources as well.
Love it.
So first, what comes to mind is low-interest loans, just accessible money at a decent rate, especially if you're a small upcoming business. Basic skill training, especially for those in the trades, and if like restaurants had access to that to send folks. Smaller commercial spaces. Right now, our footprints, they're too big. Our storefronts are too big for our businesses, and they can't pay the rent for it, and that's largely because of zoning. So by changing some of our zoning codes and things like that, we can open the door for things like corner stores, which are practically illegal under our current zoning codes. So really, what I believe personally is, how do we make the barriers less to get started? How do we make it easier to put out a shingle, to set out a cart during a night market and sell your goods? That's where I think we're missing the mark, is for those up-and-coming entrepreneurs.
Yes, Jordan. David?
We need to remember that medical cannabis is indeed medicine. And I bring this up because a couple of years ago, right in this room, city council approved some ridiculously extreme regulations for medical cannabis dispensaries, one of which was a $50,000 a year license. Now, if you want to talk about a barrier for entry, I think $50,000 a year ranks up pretty high. And they did this because they were trying to stamp out medical cannabis. I did a PowerPoint and said, you need to regulate medical cannabis like it's a pharmacy because it is indeed medicine. But while we're talking about barriers to entry, we should look at license fees to start up a new business. If you want to sell a weird product out of your own home, you really can't do that legally in South Dakota because everything has to be licensed. Well, and such rules really are a way to stop development and to stop entrepreneurs, and laws like that need to go up so we can encourage smaller businesses.
Perfect. I'm going to read the question one more time. Where are the barriers in our city government for small businesses, and what can be done to lower the barriers for small businesses and leaders to thrive?
The first thing I'll say is that I am a huge, huge, huge supporter of startups, Sioux Falls, and all of the work that they do there, their outreach, their communication, their continuing adding programs, and I think their team is fabulous. I talk with a number of people in my family, but then also friends of mine that are small business folks that maybe want to start up something, and they don't really know where to go for resources. So there's a lot of things related to grants, maybe depending on who you are, you know, your background, your culture. Five-O four loans, which I'm surprised a lot of, you know, business owners don't really know about. And so I think that there are a lot of great resources that maybe we're not communicating enough or isn't getting out to enough people. And then beyond that, when you look at what a small business has to foot the cost for, not just in things like property taxes and, you know, their rent and whatever else, but benefits are a huge thing that are hurting small businesses when it comes to their workforce, and that's something that they're having to constantly be creative about. I know, at least in my family, that's a constant conversation of how do you keep good people to then keep your business moving forward?
Thanks, Miranda. Neil?
Yeah, as regulation grows, our freedom dies. Look, they're trying to permit to get rental permits to rent out your spare bedroom. Think if you or I were trying to, it's pretty much, it's just a ridiculous thing, what they're just adding permits and fees. We just need to cut as much regulation as possible. Thank you.
Easy enough. Jennifer?
It's really hard and really easy to go last. I mean, I just echo what everyone says. I guess the only thing that maybe wasn't mentioned as much is workforce development and getting people to work. I come from a family of small business owners, and the ones that are in Sioux Falls, they just are struggling with keeping the doors open even. They have to limit their hours because we're just not getting people to work. So I'd be a big proponent of anything we can do to get folks in those jobs.
Awesome. Thank you. Go ahead, and Allison, we'll have you start with this next audience question. The question is, how will you ensure city-led initiatives, projects, and amenity expansions, think parks, pools, et cetera, are fiscally sound and impact a diverse population of residents? I'm going to read it one more time. How will you ensure city-led initiatives, projects, and amenity expansions are fiscally sound and impact a diverse population of residents?
So I hope this doesn't go over anyone's head, but one impactful thing, I think, bringing me to the table comes with is abiding by federal laws when it comes to the potential of having burial sites in anywhere in America, because, you know, we well know that there are burial mounts all over the city. And so if we can involve tribal historic preservation offices and things like that, we can, you know, look at different ways on how to even approach that situation.
Perfect. Jordan?
I think the most important thing is dialogue and consistent dialogue, not just at the library for a meeting that might get scheduled a few days in advance, but long-term discussions with city officials, with neighbors. In particular, if there's a huge amenity, let's say a $200 million amenity, that might go next to a working-class neighborhood, that neighborhood should be a part of that conversation. And I think the city, and what I hope to bring is active dialogue. Let's bring the conversation down to the neighborhoods. Let's have our city officials, our departments engaging with folks on their doorstep. That sort of engagement, while sometimes might not be feasible, if we strive for that, that's where we're going to have the sorts of connections to get things done.
Perfect. David?
Fiscally sound and diverse. Well, the fiscally sound part, we can address by opening up some transparency in the city government. There've been times when I've stood at that podium during public input and addressed the mayor and city council and say, hey, I've got these questions about this project. Never could get an answer from them. It just doesn't happen. So I would like the city council to pass an ordinance that says that practically every city document is going to be public. That's going to help tremendously. We should have all competitive bids. There've been times before when projects have been allocated to particular contractors who don't do their job and charge a lot more than they should, but that was all built into the contract, probably because somebody owed somebody else some favors. And if you want an example of that, look at that parking garage downtown that costs the city two and a half times what it should have based upon the analysis of the going rate for building a parking garage space by space. So we need to clean up some corruption, open up transparency, and then we'll get better fiscal responsibility.
Miranda?
We're really fortunate here in Sioux Falls. We're a really philanthropic community. There's a lot of folks that will come forward with contributions to make a project happen and move something forward at a rate that is exponential based on other projects because they're willing to contribute to that. Beyond those, those are a lot of times the kind of the big shiny, exciting things that then, you know, a lot of people will maybe be attracted to. But I think when we think about amenity is, sometimes that looks a little different depending on where you're at. I mentioned earlier kind of the differences in some of the neighborhoods in the Northeast in particular, and for some of those neighborhoods, maybe sidewalks are an amenity to them, and that's a quality-of-life upgrade, if you will. And that's a little bit different, probably comes at a very different cost than some of the other kind of big shiny things that come along with some philanthropic conversation. So in terms of fiscally sound, sometimes that might even be looking at where we're investing in some of those neighborhoods in our communities.
Thank you. I'm going to read it one more time just for those following along. How will you ensure city-led initiatives, projects, and amenity expansions are fiscally sound and impact a diverse population of residents? Neil?
Yeah, sure. Fiscally sound is by holding 100% transparent, open, accountable, available government is what I offer. Let's face it, the Northeast District, I mean, it's a good thing, is probably the most diverse place in South Dakota. People I'm talking to, we want more opportunity to have public barbecues, maybe tetherball, frisbee golf. They're asking for more soccer activities. Shoot, I've lost my train of thought, but we need to upgrade our parks and have more opportunities. The child places are great, but we need like public barbecue, Fourth of July barbecue, local activities. I was thinking we should have like a lemonade stand day where the kids get out every day or once a year and be little entrepreneurs and sell lemonade. And then another idea is, we should have tons of micro businesses down at Falls Park selling whatever they can to just have a side hustle and get after it. So thank you.
Perfect. Jennifer?
I'll tackle the diverse part first. You know, I think we absolutely just need to listen to our citizens. You know, representing the people in the Northwest, I need to listen to them, but I also need to listen to everyone in the city. When we're expanding a park or we're talking about a new initiative, we need to have those listening sessions, just like the city's been having. I've been attending quite a few regarding our parks. I'd like to see them more well-attended and not just maybe by the handful of people who are there and want to be vocal. I think we need to do some more marketing initiatives to get those surveys out to the more broad public so we make sure we're listening to everyone. And then the fiscally sound part, you know, I think we need to be data-driven. I think sometimes we get a little bit too much into some narratives of the louder people. We want to make sure, you know, when they say everyone uses that park, well, does everyone use that park? I mean, let's, you know, let's really do a car count. Let's, you know, evaluate how many people are going to actually be the users of these things and not just the two or three maybe that really want them. That's it.
Awesome. Richard?
First is, is it the right time to build it? I think that's a big thing, and making sure that we're not building it too soon or too late. And then second would be collaboration. We've all talked about it, collaborating with community leaders, business leaders, and the citizens alike. And having private-public partnerships. Our community does typically get behind a lot of things that we believe in, and that really helps lower the costs if we can get into some of those private-public partnerships. And also to impact all residents' location. We have to make sure that where we are doing some of these things are in a location that is accessible to all so that it is getting used by not just a select group of people.
Perfect. Jordan, we're going to start with you. I've got our third audience question here. This one is pretty succinct. What's your plan to make Sioux Falls more sustainable?
I was on the Sustainability Council back in the first one, the 18 group, the 18-person group. And what I said then was zoning codes, the ordinances. We have to make things closer together. And I know density is a scary word for some people, but we can do it in ways that are a gentle density. So I've mentioned missing middle housing a little earlier. That is a mode of which we can make adjustments to our overall footprint without making huge changes to our grid, without adjusting our way of life all that much. These simple adjustments to leverage points within the system, that is our pathway to sustainability. It's not going to be a big multimillion-dollar project. It's going to be planting native flowers in your boulevard, like Boyd over there. Like, it's going to be about us all making individual actions.
Perfect. David?
Sustainability. Here, the city put together a big sustainability project and plan, and the mayor nixed it, I guess, because, I don't know, he was opposed to it politically. And I think if we could change what motivates people to run for office, then we could address, then things that were politically unpopular with the wrong donors would be a lot more popular with everybody else. And I hate to kind of weave around the bush there, but the lack of government working for the people is the biggest preventer of sustainability... sustainability in government. But af, in addition to that, I think planting trees would really help, and the city should change some of its ordinances so that it is easier to get approval to plant trees because there's a lot of rules, of rules against that. So in short, if we can change who gets in office, then we have a real chance of promoting sustainability and many other social goods. And if we change ordinances, then we can get more trees.
Thank you. Miranda, what's your plan to make Sioux Falls more sustainable?
Sustainable and sustainability is a really broad and all-encompassing concept. Um, and so my mind goes to a few different things. You know, I actually had the opportunity to do a public works tour, and I learned way more about the landfill than I ever thought that I would. Um, and just some of the science and the work that they're doing there. And like, the black water or whatever it's called is being, you know, transferred into, um, it's a, it's a contract with Poet, and so it's used, you know, it's using, um, that stuff that's from our rubbish. Um, there's also folks like, um, Friends of the Big Sioux that are doing a lot of research and, you know, providing a lot of information. Um, there, there are a ton of other groups that are doing those kinds of things. So I think that the conversations are there. I think that the information's there, and I think it's more along the lines of crowdsourcing that, pulling that together, and, um, you know, incremental changes or ideas and things that make sense.
Thank you. Neil?
Yes, uh, sustainability. So I think for us to be sustainable, to start, we'll have to cut the size of the, the government. Uh, I think we can start at the mayor's office with his three appointees, what didn't start with the last mayor. Uh, besides that, I think sustainability is, um, work, community and working together and actually having, knowing your neighbors and saying hello like it used to be back in the day. Uh, people are just busy on their phones, walking around on television. I mean, get out and say hi to your neighbors. When's the last time you know who your neighbor is? So, but as far as sustainability, it's about the community and us working together to make a sustainable community. But as far as what's unsustainable is, the property tax rate increases in the, in the size of this government and their wages. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Jennifer?
Um, sustainability, obviously huge, huge, uh, piece, um, to tackle, kind of like housing. Um, I, I've read through or skimmed through, uh, read, read through the sustainability, uh, plan that was, um, developed, and, um, I've met with, um, same thing, Director of Public Works and gotten the tour. Uh, there's a lot in our landfill that doesn't belong there. I can just touch a little piece on it. Um, I think the statistic was eight to 10% of our landfill is film, plastic film. So, um, there's some initiatives being started right now, um, by some nonprofits in Sioux Falls, um, looking to address that and how do we start recycling plastics. Um, and there's, there's just a lot, there's a lot we can be doing right now. Um, millennium recycle, millennial recycling. Right now, they, um, they, they're doing, they're, with, combined with the city, they're working on an advertising campaign I, that I'm totally supportive of, to try to teach people how to recycle. I mean, we, we have a lot, a long way to go just with our current things that we can do, let alone starting new initiatives regarding sustainability, so.
Thank you. Richard, what's your plan to make Sioux Falls more sustainable?
Investing in the right technology at the right time and changing, uh, building codes also at the right time with the proven materials. I don't want to start going too far ahead of the curve because if we start investing and changing things that are not proven, we're gonna have to fall back. But I also don't want to be behind the curve so that we are falling behind in buying better, uh, road maintenance material or having, uh, better buildings built with better technologies that come up that make it more sustainable and more green. So we just have to ensure that we're staying with the curve and doing everything at the right time.
Perfect. Awesome.
So this is probably gonna be the most radical thing I'm gonna say today is that we need to be properly taxing the wealthy individuals moving into the city so we can, um, uphold, um, not just our own values as South Dakotans, but so we can continue to, um, be, be welcoming people, uh, into Sioux Falls as an adaptability effort. Um, you know, coming here expecting to behave a certain way and get away with certain things in other parts of the country like they have, like the places that they're running from, um, shouldn't be on, on the welcome mat of Sioux Falls and or South Dakota. Um, one of the things that I think, and getting back to the basics in our expectations, um, of what's acceptable here, we're able to, uh, change the definition of progress. And as it continues to change, uh, the radical ideas of, uh, you know, the green taxes and creating, you know, um, like weatherizing our houses and things like that become more attainable as well because in the next five to 10 years, you know, they're not gonna be such wild ideas. Uh, just like two weeks ago, the things that a lot of the guys are saying today are the things we talked about two weeks ago. Um, so as progress continues to change in definition, you know, I look forward to being part of those conversations.
Awesome. Um, we'll go ahead and start with, uh, got a fourth question. Uh, start with you on this one, David. Um, it is, this has been talked about a little bit tonight, uh, from, uh, a few candidates up here, but do you support the city funding public-private partnerships like Forward Sioux Falls directed toward community, economic, and workforce development? One more time, do you support the city funding public-private partnerships such as Forward Sioux Falls directed toward community, economic, and workforce development?
If you've got a goal, it's good to get some partnership and to work with it with other people so that you can more likely achieve success. So i, in general, the idea of public-private partnerships just sounds like a, a great way to do things. And I'm not familiar with this particular initiative, but, you know, in general, sure, get some help, do things together.
Miranda?
The concept of Forward Sioux Falls, I think, is really great because we have then private businesses that are wanting and willing to invest in continuing to pay it forward in our community. As a city, and, you know, when and if there are then city dollars contributing to things, obviously we have a responsibility to be part of that conversation and to, you know, to make sure that those things, those initiatives are doing what they say they're doing and making the impact that we need them to make. Um, but there's a lot of those efforts, there's a lot of those programs, there's a lot of those events and that impact that probably isn't happening in our community, probably isn't supporting all of the startups and entrepreneurs that start up Sioux Falls if a Forward Sioux Falls campaign doesn't happen.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead and repeat it one more time. Do you support the city funding public-private partnerships like Forward Sioux Falls directed toward community, economic, and workforce development? Neil?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I just have to check every deal and be transparent, and it's, I have not a problem with it. Um, and for the entrepreneurs, you don't need to go to some startup or anything. You can just go down there and get out there yourself today. There's nothing but opportunity outside. Thank you.
Oh, wait. Jennifer?
Yes. I mean, yeah, I do. It's, it's working. It's working for Sioux Falls. Completely supportive.
Awesome. Uh, Richard?
I'm also a strong yes, and I also believe that it, it, it helps out the city, but it also helps out the community that we're all in it together. And it brings a collaborative peace to it that opens up lines of communication. And, uh, I do believe very much in the, the initiatives of Forward Sioux Falls and, and like things, uh, like that.
Thank you. Allison, I'm gonna read it one more time. Do you support the city funding public-private partnerships like Forward Sioux Falls directed toward community, economic, and workforce development?
I, I definitely do because I, I think being able to create longer-term plans and all collaborations, um, is really gonna be key to creating the alleyway for impactful programs to thrive. Um, I, I would definitely support private partnerships when their expectation and visibility is to excel and to thrive in the community, but also to continue to create more opportunities for more people to be included into these conversations.
Awesome. Jordan?
I'm the partnership developer for the BAM Institute, and what I do is integrate resources, and I can't tell you how much I back things like Forward Sioux Falls. We need more organizations, organizations like this where we're bringing together resources and tackling problems together. Uh, the more that we can develop collaborations, and I, and not just with organizations, not just with institutions, but, uh, neighborhood members, community members on the street. And in those occasions where we have more deep collaboration, and, and when we're embedding ourselves in the challenges, like if it's the restaurant industry and how we're addressing key issues with workforce, I mentioned how to small dice and onion, that's a real, real thing. How do we create clever ways to integrate resources and make sure that we're going after the same goal, that we're getting on the bus together?
Perfect. Perfect. Um, David, I think we started with you last time. Miranda, we'll start with you on this one. Um, once in office, how will you address public transit in Sioux Falls? One more time, once in office, how will you address public transit in Sioux Falls?
I...
Oh, you? Go ahead. It's Miranda. Sorry, that's my fault.
I am looking forward to seeing the way that the, the VIA contract, um, you know, flows over time. Um, I haven't read it in its full entirety, but I'm ex, I'm excitable and optimistic about the success that they've had in other communities and the incremental kind of steps forward that they're envisioning. Um, public transportation is expensive and it's challenging, um, but, but it serves a really important purpose for our community members and really relates to where they're going to work and where they're going to live. Um, so I, I'm chatting with a few folks that are on the Transportation Commission Board Committee, whatever the proper term is. Um, but then also even some of the folks that are regular riders and, you know, their conversations. Um, and maybe this is something that can balloon into a regional approach. Maybe there's an opportunity, um, you know, to think beyond, um, just the city limits.
Perfect. Neil?
So about public transportation, I guess I'd start by riding the bus. It's right in front of my house. I never rode it, to be honest, and I've always wanted to, but it's not a subject I have a strong strength, but obviously people need to get to where they gotta go, and if they rely on the bus, it should come on time and say they should have a clean bus stop and all these type of things, and it's something I have to research more. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Neil.
I'm also excited about the, the new contract that the city has, um, and all the innovative things that they're doing with their app and their on-demand. And, uh, just like Neil, I've always wanted to ride the bus, and now that, um, I'm in this position, that's gonna be one of the first things I do here in the next couple months is, is, uh, ride the bus and, and kind of just hear from the people firsthand. Uh, we also, it's not just the bus when we talk about public transportation. Um, I think we just need to make sure our city is, you know, that, that people can bike, that they're, are, it's a walkable city. You know, we wanna, I mean, there's a lot of areas that we are so car-focused. So, um, you know, I think just in every decision we make, again, just always kind of thinking of every citizen, not just the ones that jump in their car every morning in their garage, so.
Thank you. Richard?
I agree. I'm very thankful for the contract that, uh, the city has signed. Public transportation is a big deal, and we need to do better with it. We need to make sure that people are able to get to where they're going quicker with less stops, whether that's a hospital or a grocery store or a school. And we also need to make sure that it is in our development plans. As we start to, as we are expanding, public transportation needs to be a part of that and making sure that when we're looking at different developments and different zonings that we're doing, that public transportation is in the forefront of the mind so that it is a part of everything that we're doing and not an afterthought.
Perfect. Allison, uh, once in office, how will you address public transit in Sioux Falls?
I would probably start with supporting the organizations in town right now that are supporting the travelers and the folks that do use the transit system. Um, I do know from experience that there are, uh, dozens of programs out there who are the ones buying the bus tickets and, and putting people on the bus themselves because unfortunately a good chunk of Sioux Falls doesn't use, um, transit, and I think everyone in this, on this panel has expressed that they don't. Um, so also any kind of outreach and stuff, I think, need to be including the people who this actually affects. Um, but as far as supporting new initiatives like, um, like the payers, or the, um, on-demand rides and stuff, you know, I would be questioning, um, how that had gotten to be a better solution than improving what we already have.
Awesome. Uh, Jordan, go ahead.
I've been following this issue for about six years now, since the Innovation Department was, was established by, uh, Mayor Tenhaken. Uh, I lived without a car for three years, uh, here, uh, so I engaged with the bus a fair amount. Um, and I've also used the on-demand service, all of that. Uh, I too am excited about VIA, um, but I will say, I would love to do some boring stuff. Uh, that would be like bus stops, uh, rapid transit, walkable hubs, uh, transit corridors, uh, and then connecting to the bike trail as an actual transport corridor. It's currently a recreational corridor, so that's why you don't have lights along it. So there's some, there's some things like bumpouts, which I like to paint. If, and if you need a bumpout to paint, I'll paint it for you. But the point is, um, there's a lot of things that we could be doing, and they're not that expensive, and they're not that fancy.
Awesome. Thank you. David?
Public transit. If we want to get big on public transit, we need to redesign the way we build our cities. If you, if you're in the middle of a, a suburban development and a cul-de-sac that's, uh, gotta walk like this to get to the road, you're not gonna get public transit anywhere close to that just because it's impractical due to the design of that, just that, that cul-de-sac development. So what we need to do is to straighten out new developments and put them on a grid like the way people have done for thousands of years. We, we need to address walkability and affordable housing all at the same time because that's all related to public transit. If it's too hard to walk down, you know, a couple of blocks to get to the bus stop because the traffic's too much or the sidewalk's too narrow, public transit is just not gonna pan out. So I encourage a redesign of particularly new developments for increased density, for, um, for affordable housing, and indeed to promote public transit.
Cool. Um, we will, uh, move on to our next question. I think Neil will start with you this time. Um, the question from the audience is, I want to hear about your track record. What have you already done to improve the Sioux Falls community, either as a citizen or in another leadership role? I'm gonna read it one more time. I want to hear about your track record, what you have done already to improve the Sioux Falls community, either as a citizen or in another leadership role.
Uh, just as a citizen, I bought a property that needed a lot of rehab, rehabbed it up, and three families have lived there for a while, and they have a nice, safe home. And providing families and women especially, they, they want their door locked. No one can just get in the common area and start doing drugs and these type of things that are going on in the other properties with the code violations. Uh, besides that, we, we just Monday this week, we, uh, we got a drug house closed, so, and I just continue gonna do that even if I'm not elected. We're gonna continue until the problem's fixed because this is inhumane, and no one, any, anyone else here would never let anyone in their entire family live in these, um, type of conditions they're living in, in squalor. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Jennifer?
Thank you. I appreciate the question. Um, I have been in the nonprofit leadership world for the last 25 years. Um, I've been a strong advocate for kids. Um, I currently work for the South Dakota Lions Foundation where we've made, we partner with the school district and do all the vision screenings, actually, uh, in about 60 to 70% of the school districts across the state. Um, I have served on a number of boards, um, in Sioux Falls. Uh, I've been very, very involved in my kids' school. I've volunteered countless hours, um, both at elementary, middle school, and high schools. Um, and I've, I've, I've given back a lot. Um, I've been a leader just in probably every aspect of my life and, and, uh, being an empty nester next year, I have a little time on my hands, and I, I hope to serve the city of Sioux Falls as best I can.
Thanks, Jennifer. Richard, I'm gonna read the question one more time. Uh, I want to hear about your track record, what you've already done to improve the Sioux Falls community, either as a citizen or in another leadership role.
One thing I get to say is, you can look up my track record when I was in the legislature, and I voted pro Sioux Falls, I voted pro families, I voted pro education, and it was a big, big thing for me to ensure that our community was moving forward and looking in different areas that we could also be improving. And so I'd encourage you all to go ahead and look me up if you would like, and, uh, that is what I have done to help Sioux Falls move forward.
Thanks, Richard. Allison?
So, um, the first six months or so, I tried really hard not to get involved here because it is crazy here. Um, upon finding out that there are over 170 organizations that checked the box for the, helping the marginalized communities, um, I waited two weeks and for somebody to step up when Jacob James was killed behind the Burger King by a police officer. Um, I was in no way trying to prove his innocence, uh, but what I saw was, um, an unarmed, uh, individual surrendering with a second cop coming from behind the corner. Um, in our actions there, we started, um, creating an action group where now there is a protest group that goes out every Friday, and they've shown up for me on numerous times. We've been able to organize some, um, different things, but I've also developed a, uh, a 501(c)(3) here. Um, currently, we are responding and, uh, tracking the, um, the gangs, like you're, like you mentioned. You're pretty brave there. No, I'm just kidding. Um, but it is what it is because it is really deep here, and, um, I've, I've managed to get really deep into Sioux Falls and, um, managed to extract some girls from the drug trafficking rings here, human trafficking rings as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Jordan?
Uh, well, uh, let's see. I was, I am the partnership developer for the BAM Institute. Uh, I founded the Strong Towns Local Conversation, which is the largest one in the nation. We just had a mini documentary made about us. Uh, started Citizen Taco. This summer, we fed over 20 weeks, 150 people a week out in front of UGM, talked to people, got to know them. Uh, started the Community Revitalization Collective. It received $100,000 from the South Dakota Community Foundation. Uh, we build direct collaborations with area nonprofits. Uh, co-founded the Sioux Falls Tool Library, which is currently in operation, uh, working on a preservation kitchen, uh, as well as a community workshop in the basement of the Union Gospel Mission. Uh, painted bumpouts, crosswalks, uh, done tons of forums, uh, did a harvest festival that fed 1,400 people, uh, use, utilizing locally sustainable veg and protein, did design camps for kids. people, utilizing locally sustainable veg and protein, did design camps for kids, tree planting gardens, and yeah, some other stuff too, and yeah, okay.
I wonder how long we could've let that go, just about?
A lot longer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
David, I'll go ahead and read the question one more time. "Wanna hear about your track record. What have you done already to improve the Sioux Falls community, either as a citizen or in a leadership role?"
When my kids were little, I taught martial art at an after-school program. A friend and I did that together, and we taught a bunch of cute little kids, and they were really happy with our time there. But the thing they liked most was learning how to jump off of a ladder. Really, if you know how to do it, you can jump pretty high and not get hurt. But, oh, and I won a great award for my work doing that. Over the last six years or so, I've done something which is very powerful, but not so much hands-on. I've written about 175 PowerPoints and presented them here, talking about different issues, their causes, their solutions, and how we can fix things and really make things a whole lot better. And because of that tremendous experience, I'm fairly knowledgeable on really quite a number of city problems. I'm gonna put my stuff together, publish it in a book about practical American government.
Cool. All right. Miranda, take his own.
Growing up, there wasn't a whole lot of extra involvement. You kinda put your head down and you had to do what needed to be done, and you worked. And so that's a lot of my upbringing. It wasn't until I started getting more involved in extra things when I was in high school that really I expanded outside of that. And so that's where I started doing things like going, I went to Girl State and I paged in the Senate, and then even into college, being involved in volunteer groups, and then into my professional career, getting involved in groups like Author of My Life, LOT, the South Dakota, or the Change Network through the Bush Foundation, SME, Downtown Rotary. And so it's all of those kinds of groups where I've got to learn a ton about the way that so many of our community leadership organizations work together that have really inspired me to want to pay forward those opportunities in a service organization. So that's a huge contributor to what I hope to pay back and pay forward should I have the opportunity to serve as a Northeast Sioux Falls City Councilor.
Love it. We'll go ahead and to, I think we have time for two more questions and then some closing remarks, and so, go ahead. I believe Jennifer will start with you on this one. I think, we've talked a little bit about this, but maybe a little more directly. How can you facilitate more honest and open communication between the different city departments and the citizens? Again, how can you facilitate more honest and open communication between the different city departments, example, Parks and Rec and all that, and the citizens? Start with you.
That's a very important question. I think a lot of people are asking right now. I think it starts with relationships. You know, you need to have to trust that whoever you're talking to is listening and understanding your concerns. I'm a strong communicator. I'm not afraid to have tough conversations. So, you know, it's the city council's role to be basically sort of the legislative body of our city and to represent the citizens that elect us. So I, I think relationship building is where, building is where it starts, and then just not being afraid to ask tough questions and expecting answers.
Richard?
I agree. Relationship building, but then also being accessible and accountable for both parties, being accessible for the citizens and accountable to the citizens, and also being accessible and accountable as well to the different city departments. And that way, if you can be that for all parties involved, even though a decision that gets made may not be liked, you can walk away trusting and knowing that the people involved have done everything that they can to make the process as open and transparent as possible.
Perfect. I'm gonna read the question one more time here, Allison, but how can you facilitate more honest and open government, or excuse me, how can you facilitate more honest and open communication between the different city departments and the citizens?
Well, first of all, I think having a Native American on council brings a whole different perspective that no one else on, either of my opponents obviously cannot, cannot bring to the table, and that in a sense puts me in, at a level of the community that not, not a lot of people are actually taking the time to get into without it being exploitative or for their own personal gain. And I think that sets me, sets me apart as a candidate, but also, you know, it lines me up to have those hard conversations. You know, a lot of the issues that we're talking about can come off as like savorism if you're coming from a certain, certain perspective, because a lot of the times, some of the issues that we're talking about on city council are going to be things that don't affect us personally. And as a single mom, living in my own situation and going through the things that, the life that I live, a lot of the decisions made in this room do affect me, and I think that is really what sets me aside from any other of the candidates.
Awesome. Jordan?
It's really about building connections, and I think that was brought up by a few folks here, and that can be done over, as I've said, over food is a big one, but how can we have facilitated conversations? We have community table talks and things like that, but then there's also different types of forums that can be done, that are open forums. They have an agenda that you build that day, so the sort of outcomes aren't pre-generated. They come naturally from the group. These are forums that I facilitate personally, and I'm gonna continue to do them, win or lose. And the big thing is too, is how do we emphasize citizens as collaborators, not just customers? The city serves them, yes, but how can we start having collaborative discussions about the future of our neighborhoods and the amenities that go in them? And that's something that'd be done through things like participatory budgeting, where citizens actually get a choice on where their dollars go in their neighborhood.
Thanks, Jordan. David, I'll go ahead and read the question one more time. "How can you facilitate more honest and open communication between the different city departments and the citizens?"
Communication is one thing, honest communication is another. So you might be able to get information from the city regarding a particular action occurring, say like moving an easement for sewage at Smithfield's, but getting an explanation of why that easement moved is another thing entirely. And when they moved that easement, I figured out that, I think they did that because it makes it easier for Smithfield to dump sewage in the river. There's different zones in the river, different water quality standards, and if you move an easement from a rigid zone to a more flexible zone, it's easier to dump sewage. But it's hard to get that information out if there's some shenanigans going on behind the doors that we can't see, and I bring this up again because I've seen it occur, or I've seen the consequences of those actions in city governments time and time again. But if we can change the motivation for the people who run for office, if we can change who pays for their campaigns, then we will have more likelihood of honest and open communication.
Perfect. Miranda?
When we talk about connection, collaboration, and relationship building, how do we do that? It's being kind, it's being considerate, and it's being curious. And, you know, when you have a conversation, you're seeking to build relationships with folks, especially, you know, city directors or park directors, I wouldn't claim to know all the things that they know. You know, they're the experts in their realm, and so I think that respect for their knowledge and their understanding with the curiosity and necessity to dig deeper, to be able to be the vessel and the conduit for the voice of the collective is really important. I find that a lot of times in relationship building and seeking information, and then being able to challenge in a really respectful way, is a lot easier when that relationship is built on kindness and consideration and respect.
Perfect. Neil?
Yeah, so the question to transparency and accountability, or...
Yeah, what can we do to kind of foster or improve communication between the city departments and the community?
Okay. Yeah, well, I guess to start is, well, the city departments. I guess the councilors are the representation of the people since they're elected. The city finance director has been asked by our representation here in the Northeast District by Councilmember Starr to give, to get the financials, and he hasn't got them. He asked February 20th, and we're still waiting. Besides that, we need to change the mindset of the government. It is, we, they work for us, they act like they are our boss, so that their mentality's all wrong. They need to serve us, and the mayor is not our boss, he works for us, so we need to change the mentality of the city government. Thank you.
Perfect. This'll be our final question before we, we give a little bit of time to wrap up. I think, Jennifer, you just went, Richard, this question is for you to start. "What is the most important thing you can do to help neighborhoods be successful?" Say that one more time. What is the most important thing you can do to help neighborhoods be successful?
Listen to what the neighborhoods have to say, listen to why they have to say it, listen to how they say it, but more importantly, listen to why. And so if we can listen to the individual neighborhoods and to everyone, that is the number one thing that I can do as a city councilor for you all, is just to listen.
Allison?
I'm gonna say something corny, too. I would like to believe people when they tell us their struggles, when they tell us the things that they're dealing with. You know, it's, it's one thing to listen, but you know, some, a lot of the times, some of these things fall on deaf ears, and therefore, the progress can only go so far. Being on council, you know, I look forward to being, you know, more inclusive when it comes to being able to bring these people closer to the table. A lot of the times, it means a lot more to people to be able to say that they know someone that can create those changes and make those connections, and so I really look forward to being able to be the guy that folks look forward to going to.
Jordan, I'm gonna read the question real quick. "What is the most important thing you can do to help neighborhoods be successful?"
There's something called ABCD, Asset-Based Community Development. It's strengths-based development, and it's a specific strategy that we can deploy, and this is what I use in something called the Community Revitalization Collective. We're using this to deploy the Quality of Life Framework with Habitat for Humanity and the Whittier Neighborhood, and the first thing you gotta do is you gotta know yourself. You need, you need an identity. If you don't have a community identity, a neighborhood identity, you don't know what to do next. So one of the best things that we can do is identify the neighborhoods. We don't have a lot of identifiable neighborhoods. The distinct ones are All Saints Cathedral, Whittier, McKennan, but all through the city, we do not have defined neighborhoods. So the big thing I would do is work with the likes of Diane Decoyer down at the city and identify core members of these neighborhoods to create these defined boundaries.
All right. David?
You gotta care. I mean, that, that one word says, says what you really need to do, is just care about people. So you go around and you talk to this person and talk to that person, see what bugs them and what the city could do, and maybe you go to a forum like this one, and listen to all the questions, and maybe get some answers, because, you know, the questions that get asked here are pretty much appropriate to any neighborhood in the city. And if a person opens up their mind to care and opens up their email and the phone number to talk to people, sure. Then you figure out what's going on, and then you, after you understand the problems, you have some opportunity to work on a solution. But it all comes down to actually caring about people, not so worried about who's gonna pay for your next campaign, worry more about the average guy, the average gal.
Perfect. Miranda?
I'm not totally sure if we, as a community, truly understand or embrace the concept of being a neighbor or what a neighborhood is. You know, there's a few notable neighborhoods, neighborhood associations that we can list out that are really active, you know, the All Saints Neighborhood, for example, actively having conversations with trade ministries and their new, you know, and their potential new facility. But as a community, are all of our neighbors engaged? You know, do we have strong churches or strong schools like we used to? I'm not sure that we're all operating on the same definition of what a neighborhood is or should be, and maybe that's dictating where people are choosing to go also. But to be successful as a neighborhood, I think it's listening to each individual neighborhood, because where people are choosing to kind of stake their claim, what neighborhood they're choosing to be involved in, is likely indicative of the involvement and the kind of neighbor that they'd like to be.
Awesome. Neil?
Can you please?
I'm gonna repeat the question.
Okay.
"What do you think is the most important thing you can do to help neighborhoods be successful?"
First, I'll start out with, do everything for the common good of who I represent. I'll start with that. And then, like what I, what I do, I would say, take action. My neighbors, we built our own planters, and we grow our own little garden, and we got a compost bin, and we just get after it with ourselves. Then we need to build a sense of community, you know? People have sweat equity and they invest in the community, so that builds a sense of ownership. Besides that, and we need more entertainment options, so you can hang out in your community and meet your neighbors and kind of start from there. So that's a good start, and I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Love it. Jennifer?
Absolutely. One of my favorite things about Sioux Falls is our neighborhoods, the neighborhoods at least that I've, I've lived in. They've just become a part of me. We're in the northwest part of Sioux Falls, they're almost like little, small towns, and that's important. And we, I think we facilitate that through block parties, getting to know each other. And I, the city has always been very supportive of that. I think they need to continue to be, maybe even more. This last summer, the organizer of our city block, or, excuse me, our neighborhood block party, she actually called the fire department and asked if they would bring a fire truck and let the kids kind of climb on the fire truck, and it was just a, I mean, it was, it's as small and little as that is, it was really meaningful to our neighborhood, brought more people out than maybe would've. So I think the city can really partner with neighborhoods to try to encourage them to get to know each other, because once people know each other, they're gonna feel safer, they feel, they're gonna feel like it's more, it's home. Particularly on the west side, we are a lot of people from small towns across South Dakota and Northwest Iowa, Southwest Minnesota. So we, we just like that small-town feel, and I think the city needs to continue to support that.
Awesome. That's all we have for questions. Now we're gonna move into closing statements. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to deliver their closing comments. We'll go ahead and start, Allison, with you.
All right. So, closing comments. I really just wanna thank for, thank you guys for the invitation and putting this together and stuff. This was really cool. You know, and the one thing that I wanna say about me running is that I have no ulterior motive. A lot of this has to do with the fact that I have been organizing for over 20 years, and when I came into the city here, I knew that I was gonna get involved eventually. And so I really think that there is a lot of people in Sioux Falls that feel the way I do about a lot of different levels of politics. We're obviously already right out the gate, we were all, you know, I specifically was like wrongfully identified in my politics, and unfortunately, that's just a lot of the problems that we see in municipal government as well. There's a lot of divisive ideology that allows people to cloud their way of thinking and cloud their way of operating. Over 20 years, I have continued to build networks on both sides of the aisle, and I continue to thrive with those relationships and look forward to being able to bring this stuff to the table and, and open up my network to the city of Sioux Falls.
Awesome. Jordan?
Yeah, I wanna thank the chamber for putting this on, thank the city government for letting us use Carnegie Hall, a beautiful, beautiful space. And I just wanna say, I love this city. I love this city at the bottom of my heart. We have so many rich assets here, and I look mainly at the rock beneath our feet, the quartzite stone. It is strong, and I believe that my efforts have shown themselves over the years. I've put seven years of, of a lot of hard work, sometimes irrationally hard work, and to really just get people connected, to do a potluck, to do a forum, just 'cause, 'cause it was something I wanted to know about, or people I knew wanted to know more about it. And I think this journey for me has been an organic one. I did not decide to do council when I started Strong Towns, or the BAM Institute, or the Tool Library, but what I did see in this journey is that this is an opportunity that if you all wanna vote for me, I will continue to sick my teeth in to the hard stuff, to the things that are difficult, to have the intense conversations, and to embed myself in the challenges. So I would appreciate your vote April 9th.
Thanks, Jordan. David?
My goal is to work for practical, caring, honest government. Okay, now that's what I'm into, and that's what a lot of people profess to be interested in, but it's not the reality, okay? I hate to break the news to people, but if it takes a billion dollars to run for president, where's that money coming from? It's not gonna come from the average American citizen, it's gonna come from the super-rich who want the government to make more laws to make the super-rich richer. That's the fundamental reality. It makes for bad government. So I'm in favor of election reform, so that campaigns are publicly funded. I'm in favor of increasing transparency in local government, so we can actually figure out what's going on and why it's happening. And if you can make those kind of fundamental changes, you can change everything. So if you... make those kind of fundamental changes, you can change everything. So, if you change the motivation of elected officials, they can look at drug prohibition rationally and see what a mess it is and find a better solution. They can look at childcare and say, oh, God help these people out. They can look at homelessness and say, oh, what we're doing now is costing the city money. It'd be cheaper to put these people in housing. I keep coming back to motivation of elected officials because it is so extremely important in their actions. If you don't get to the motivation, then they are free to say they're going to fix things that they never do. So, that's why campaign reform is so important.
Thanks David. Miranda?
Thank you to not just the folks putting on this forum, but to all of you here in attendance and paying attention. You're really engaged people. And when we look at the percentage of folks that are going to go to, that are likely going to go to the polls on April 9, we have an opportunity in this community to inspire people to be more engaged and to be more involved and to pay more attention to what's happening really locally. And as I've shared with you, in my upbringing and kind of my background, that's a lesson learned and an opportunity that I've had. And so, really, my heart to serve is just that, is to serve. I feel really incredibly fortunate for the opportunities my husband and I have here. The experiences that he has as an educator, the experiences that I've had being able to be part of small businesses. And as a city councilor, we are experiencing the growth here in Sioux Falls that we are because there's a lot of people that like calling Sioux Falls home and want to continue calling it home. So, it's a lot about looking forward to the future and continuing to build a community that we not just want to be part of, but that our children's children want to be part of. My new niece that I'm going to have wants to be part of. And that continues to allow us to be really proud of the legacy that we leave behind. So, I would humbly ask for your support on April 9.
Thanks Miranda. Neil?
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you everyone for participating. And please go out and vote and get your friends a vote too. And thank you for whoever helped me get on the ballot. Besides that, I feel like I'm the most qualified. I have over 20 years' work experience. Almost drove semi-trucks for 15 years, almost a decade of work experience. I worked for city government before. And I know how this works. All the waste is at City Hall and HR. So, we can cut that and bring, from my experience, when I did part-time plow truck driving, I made 25 bucks an hour. They're paying less than that here now. We need to change this. And actually, the government, it's meant to serve the people, not to enrich yourself and appoint your special interest friends. So, if you vote for me, I am a pro Second Amendment advocate and a fiscal conservative, but a social libertarian. So, I would enjoy your vote. I humbly ask for your vote. So, thank you.
Thanks Neil. Jennifer?
Thank you to the chamber. Thank you for everyone who's here and others who are watching online. And like was said before, you're the engaged ones and I appreciate it. I am running on a post. But I really did want to come here tonight and introduce myself. I have been told, something I pride myself on, people have told me I'm very approachable. I plan to continue to be that way. Please do not hesitate to reach out. What you see is what you get. I'm just, you know, I'm just going to be honest and shoot straight with you. And hope to represent the people of the Northwest and all of Sioux Falls as best as I can possibly do. We have some great things going on here. I'm probably always going to be the, a little bit of the glass half-full person. But we do have some tremendous things happening in Sioux Falls. And I'm excited to be part of moving all that forward. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks Jennifer. Richard?
I also want to echo, thank you to the chamber. Thank you to all of you out here, everyone listening. And also, thanks to everyone that's up here as well. We are all running because we love Sioux Falls. We may have different ideas of how we want to move Sioux Falls forward. But it is so great to see the collaboration up here and getting to hear other ideas. I look forward to being your next At-Large City Councilor. I promise I will remain accessible. I want to be held accountable. I will be reliable. And lastly, and this is proven for me, I research all sides of an issue. I don't just go in and say, I'm going to do this or I'm going to do that. I collaborate with people. I read. And I make sure that when I'm going in to make a decision, that it is informed. And so, I would like your vote on April 9. And I will enjoy being your next city councilor at large.
Richard Thomason, Allison Renville, Jordan Duffenbaugh, David Zakaitis, Miranda Basie, Neil Jeskey, Jennifer Siggeti. Thank you also so much. I know how hard campaigns can be. I know what, how much time, effort, resources these campaigns can take. And that's only to run for the job. And I know how hard serving can be. And I know the commitment. And I know the commitment that your family makes for that. So, thank you all for putting your names out there. Kudos to everybody up here. I think the rest of the country could learn a lot from the dialogue that you guys had up here, from the respect. Just kudos to each and every one of you. In addition to that, I want to wish each of you good luck in the upcoming election. The election is on April 9. I'd encourage all of the citizens to get out and vote. Like many of you, I'd like to also thank the city of Sioux Falls, the chamber. Thank you for letting us use Carnegie Hall. All of the volunteers that helped make tonight possible. And equally as important, the audience, all of you for being here. Thank you so much. With that said, let's give the candidates one more round of applause and hope you all have a great evening.